Good afternoon. It is 1:00. Time for our regularly scheduled commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Today is Commissioner Cessna's turn to do the Pledge of Legions and the invocation.
Please raise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day that you have given us and thank you for all of the people that have traveled to be here today with us for this meeting. Please comfort those communities that have had storms and that are cleaning up and be with our first responders as they work to keep our community safe. Please watch over us during this meeting to help us make wise decisions and to move our community forward in a positive direction. And as we pray, amen.
Next up is approval of the minutes. Did any commissioners see any changes or corrections?
No.
Okay. Minutes stand approved. Up next is public comment. This is the time where if there's something that's not on the agenda, you can come up and talk about it. You'll have five minutes. And we have, first, we have Robert Wetmore, the co-director at Great Plains Development Incorporated. And when you do come up, I mean, if you could just state your name for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the time. My name is Bob Wetmore. I'm Executive Co-Director of Great Plains Development out of Dodge City. And I will pass out these little binders. We try to give you a brief two- or three-minute update on what we're doing and where we're going.
You can just hand those to her. Oh, there's.
Oh, wait. I do have mine.
Thank you.
Just as a brief reminder, Great Plains Development serves the 28 counties of southwest Kansas. We focus mainly through two hats. One hat is the grant hat. You've probably heard of CBG Municipal Grants. Do we have as many opportunities here in Finting County? No, mainly because of the population. Are there targeted projects that we can go after? You bet. And we're always talking about those. The other hat that we wear, that you're probably most familiar with, is the revolving loan hat and the ability to help the banks with all of these loans. Most importantly, economic development here has been fantastic, especially now that they've added SBDC in business planning. We're kind of connected at the hip right now, and that's a great thing. We got one on Friday. I have another one that I'm visiting today with a banker. So I know that economic development has been extremely helpful and important in not only funneling those leads to us, but also helping with the business plans. Because a lot of people come in, they may not, they may have a good idea, they may not have finances, financial planning, they may not have a narrative or a business plan. In the front of this packet, there is a buff sheet that I'll refer to, kind of give you a rundown of some of the different loan funds, activities that we've had. You know that we've got several loans in our portfolio that we continue to service, and I have outlined there some of the ones that we've been collecting on. What these go back to are literally the funds that we had that we were able to give out during COVID, if you remember, right? We had that short-term COVID period. So we're getting to the end of the three-year loan period. Know that some of them are a bit delinquent, so we're spending a lot of time with them. We do that monthly. We have a person in-house that just bubbles up on these monthlys, so we're up on all of them. In fact, since I recorded this, we've actually had some improvement in a couple of them. Currently, your balance at the end of March for your CBG revolving loan fund, which we help administrate, was $464,760.91. We go after that fund as often as we can. If we get a bank that says they need some help, we look at that fund first. What are our holdbacks? The low moderate income requirement and the number of dollars per job, and then the days vacant wage rates. If we get into construction, then we're stuck with those days vacant wage rates. So we try hard and use those first. We have a number of opportunities for different types of loans, the Network Kansas Loan, which I won't go over all of those, but we have a brand-new one called the Growth Kansas Fund. If economic development gets a lead for this and it doesn't fit their local lead community or they need more funds, these are available, so I'll just put these with you and let you look at this at your leisure. We appreciate your membership every year. Thank you very much. And if you consider another year, we would really appreciate that. There is an agreement in your packet. The county has provided their share. They have the maximum amount in the 28 counties is $8,700. Your share would be $4,350. That keeps us on the road, keeps us up with all of these programs, which, by the way, I'll be able to keep you there again next week. We try to keep up with all these programs. Questions, thoughts? We appreciate your membership. Dan Fankhauser is, I hope he'll continue to allow me to remember because he's the president of our board, and he's been fantastic. Dwayne Grease at the county level is also on our board, so we're kind of overrepresented by Garden, but that's okay. Questions, thoughts?
Just one thought that I had. When I'm looking at the page that has all the loans on it, there's, it's an instant beginning of time. Yeah.
Great Plains has been working with you, and we try to protect the confidentiality there, but we have all those on file. So if you ever need or want to know anything, we update it annually, so that would probably be at the end of last year.
Okay. When you report this out, could it be possible to sort them by date or by?
We can do source. Absolutely.
It's just, it's just really hard to go through and try to find out what's happened in the last five years.
It is. Extra categories, you can't see ahead of that. That's what the sort is, the extra Excel rows in there, the columns are actually what causes sort. We can sort it.
Okay.
And we'd be glad to provide that, kind of restore the list for you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And what we'll do, since it'll be in your hands, we'll expand all those columns. You'll see everything.
Okay.
Everything.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, we appreciate you coming.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming and presenting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Mayor, I do know, as part of public comment, we have representatives from the public power community in Kansas here that took part. Thanks, Bob. Took part in our pre-meeting workshop, which today was a lunch celebration of Mike Muirhead. So I think they'd like to come forward, introduce themselves, and say a few words.
Great, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commission. Paul Walberg, the General Manager of Kansas Municipal Utilities Agency. It's really, truly an honor to be here today, to be able to recognize Mike Muirhead. So just a little background, Mike won a National or American Public Power Association. That was about four weeks ago. We had a national conference in Seattle. Mike got to walk across the big stage. It was cool, let's there just to see that recognition, but it's really cool to bring him back to the hometown here and recognize Mike. So Mike won the Mark Croissant Manager and Leadership Award. It's probably, it's one of the top few, three awards that APPA gives out each year. I went back and looked at the records, and there's only been a handful of Kansans that have won this award in the last 75 years. That just kind of shows you, you know, this award and how important it is and how cool it is for Mike. Just a little bit about them. Mark Croissant was the Executive Director of APPA for eight years. This award recognizes managers that have demonstrated the capacity and empowered and inspired employees to achieve common goals, as well as raise the performance of employers or employees and organizations, such as KNBA, to a higher standard. You know, really, I want to recognize Matt and Kenneth Potter. They actually did the application on behalf of Mike, and so they put a lot of work into it, but I think it was an easy sell. So just to give you a few things that Mike has accomplished here at Garden City. Soon after he was hired here 12 years ago, the city implemented a strategic plan, a power supply study. And through that study, the city switched from Wheatland Electric as a power supply provider to KNBA. And that provided over $4 million in savings a year to the city and to the customers. Also provided more control, and some new generation was built for that reliability, the Genuson Energy Center. Just more recently, the city did a project to tie to the transmission system and bypass the Wheatland Electric system. The main reason for that is reliability and control. And the reliability has been shown through, APPA has a, what they call Reliable Public Power Provider, RP3 program. The city of Garden City initially received a Gold Award, but more recently received a Platinum Award. And just to give you an idea of what that means, about one out of every 10 public power entities achieved that level. So you guys are in the top 10% of reliability, and that's all done due to Mike and his team and the city. So congratulations on that. It doesn't stop there. You know, Mike has, reaches out through the state of Kansas. He has served on my executive committee, or KNBA's executive committee, for over eight years, president for three years. He also has served the Executive Committee of Kansas Municipal Utilities, and we're rats here for that organization, and as president. And he has pushed both organizations to that higher standard that this award is showing here. So KNBA has grown substantially over the last eight to 10 years and undermines leadership. He also really encompasses, you know, we're better together than separate. And just one example, the city of Stockton lost their substation transformer, and the city of Garden City happened to have an older spare one. And I think within a day, that transformer here in Garden City is on track and up to Stockton. But it just doesn't stop there. Mike was there. Mike rolled up to Stockton at that kind of Saturday, just seeing that transformer unloaded and in place at the city of Stockton. So, you know, just, those are just a few things that Mike has done. So Mike, if you can come over here. One thing I forgot to say is I really consider Mike a friend as well, and I thank you all as well. He is an amazing human being, not just a great public power leader, but a human being. Again, congratulations, Mike.
Want to take a picture first, and then you want to say a few words afterward?
You want all the commissioners with you? Yes?
Just one.
Probably should, though, if you don't mind.
I guess you'll be doing.
Oh.
Paul, invite the other public power.
Come on up, guys.
I'm sure there are people in the back.
Yeah.
I'm back here.
Yeah.
There it is.
We're getting, we're getting.
My head's turned.
Congratulations.
Like, you want to say a few words?
You got to unchain.
Mayor, I do think Mike wants to say a couple words. I think it'd be appropriate to remind him this is the public comment, so.
Please state your name for the record. Yeah, yeah. 10 now.
Listen, I really, truly do appreciate all the kind words that's been said and everything that we've done, but this is really not about me. This starts here with the leadership of this group, but it rolls to Matt as the leader of the organization, and it certainly just rolls right on by me, and it's all the men and women in this organization that make this a successful place. So it's not about me, but I really appreciate all the kind words, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Now that we do have one more, somebody else would like to come on. Hi, welcome.
Well, I don't know how I'll follow that one. I'll do my best. Again, my name is James Chris-Salkum with Idea Tech, Community and Public Relations Manager. I didn't plan on speaking today, but I visited with Deborah yesterday and thought I'd just come by and introduce myself. Some of you may know who Idea Tech is. We're the one that won the Highway 83 grant down all the way from Seward up to Scott City. Good news is, we started construction on that in February. We're just now starting to come within Finting County, and eventually, sooner or later, we're going to start building out the city of Garden City with our own private dollars. And so I wanted to introduce myself and just say hello. I'd love to get to know everyone, the council members. I apologize, I didn't get to visit with Matt first. I tried to come out here, but didn't get to come out. But again, I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself and be in the back and just observe.
Welcome, Paul.
All right, welcome. Thank you. Thanks. Anybody else for public comment? All right, great. That's awesome to have that much public comment.
Item 6A, the city of Garden City and the Garden City Police Department would like to recognize our explorers from the GCPD Explorer Program for their participation in the 2023 Capital Challenge. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. What you have before you, obviously, is some recognition for our Explorer post 1911. They participated in the 2023 Capital Challenge competition in Topeka, and they did that against 14 teams from multiple states. The Capital Challenge is designed to be very demanding on both physical and mental capabilities of each Explorer. The events are designed to test the strengths and limitations of the Explorer's intelligence, personality, demeanor, and physical abilities, as well as dedication and conviction to the Explorer program. The GCPD's post 1911 finished strong in overall competition and received the following awards. First place in tactical operations, thank you. Second place in tactical squad agility, thank you. First place in dodgeball, also thank you. Second place in physical agility. Second place in drug and paraphernalia identification. Third place in bank alarm response. Third place in active shooter. Fourth place in high-risk stops. And fourth place in undercover operations. The GCP, I'm sorry, GCP post 1911 competitors were Jocelyn Cruz, Mr. Aguilar, Aslan Bradley, Wyatt T., Jaden Castillo, Jackson Mayoson. Today, we have some folks that are here to represent the Explorer program if they want to. So.
So I have a couple of explorers here, and we also have a couple advisors, so.
So obviously, going to competition, they, seeing these kids grow up, they're all-star, and most of them were 14. So now they're 16, 17, 18 now. So they're getting up there in age and just, their demeanor and everything is great to watch now because they're adults. And watching them in scenarios, like, nothing beats it, watching where they came from, all the advice they took from us, and basically, they took it, stored it, and, because we did this over months training, so they got it stored and draw back to it the one time they need it. So they, they did perfect over the weekend while we're there, and I also, congrats to them.
That's great. We'll have, if you guys want, we'll do a picture. I don't know who all you wanted. We can get everyone in the police department in it if you'd like, because, you know, you love to have your pictures taken. So come down.
Oh, my gosh.
Can you see the camera? I don't think she can see the camera.
I shall take a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
How many explorers are in the program?
It's, we're still recruiting. We always have spots available. And it's kind of influxes, they start to roll out and go to school after they graduate, so. I could say in a little bit, it would be wrong.
Okay. No, that's fine. And when you say you're recruiting, how does, how does somebody find out about getting onto the Explorer program or into this program?
Yeah, if they want to contact the police department, and just a regular number, 6202761300 to ask for the Explorer program, we'll get onto the right person and get that word ready.
All right. Sounds good.
Bracken was.
Yeah, Bracken was.
Yes, yes.
We're proud of him, too.
That's great.
That's awesome. Growing our own.
Yes, that's the way to do it. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Good job. Congratulations.
Okay.
Item 7A, Representatives from GC Investments, Inc., developer of Phase 1 of the Sports of the World Starmon project, are here to present an update on the construction status of their multi-sport facility. So come on up.
Guess I'm walking by myself.
I put an S on the end of representative.
Yeah. We cleaned out the room, and then Mike didn't want to come up. Just want to give you guys an update. It's been a little bit since we've topped Starmon. We're excited. It's moving along quite nicely, other than the rain, which we're never going to complain about. Right now, where we're at, we got an overall site layout. Des right here can answer any questions on that you might have. It's pretty neat. It's a neat partnership. We really appreciate what the city's done, working with us, as well as GMCN, Dick Construction. It's moving along nicely so far, although it doesn't look like we've done much, we've done quite a bit out there. We poured 15 columns and 17 crossties and only have about 14 more crossties to go last time I heard, so we're coming close. We have half the steel for the building already on site, so if you look back to the southeast, there's a lot of steel back there. We're hoping the next 14 to 21 days to have steel start going up in the air. So once that starts happening, I think people are going to get a little bit more excited. Any questions you guys have on site plan here on this first page, or any questions I can answer regarding the project where we're at?
If I zoom into some of these areas, you just want to talk through them real quick? Do you mind?
Number one, on the top on the north side, we're going to have National Brand Hotel right there, on site. The announcement here will come later here this fall. On the west side, number seven, it's going to be a family-style, sit-down, not fast food, not slow food restaurant. Fast casual. I can't remember. Fast casual. It's a family-owned chain. It's really neat, really good food. It's going to book in on the west side, the sports facility, quite nice. Outdoors in the white, number four, you kind of see drawn in different things there. We got a wood football field, we got different yard games, we got a playground. It's all going to be turf, green space. It's a one-stop shop. We want people to come, enjoy, bring their families out. You know, if you're coming traveling for a tournament, stay with us, eat with us. It's going to be real neat. Then number three, the main structure, or the main building, is very large, 100, over 172,000 square feet. Put that in perspective, it's what, nearly four and a half acres underfoot. It is big. It's 240 feet, 500 feet, or tall, 40 foot tall. Pretty neat, special. If you scroll down, we'll go kind of some of the components of it. Indoors, we have, on the west side, we have six basketball courts that also turn into six volleyball courts. We have a divider in the middle that's going to be raised seating. We're going to kind of have a, oh, a suite area or team breakout area that teams can stay, rent. However, we haven't figured out how we're going to do this yet, but it's going to be open. You know, we want someplace for coaches and teams to be able to break out together, go over play, go over strategy, whatever it may be. On the east side, we have a, it's a turf area. It's all turf. It is 240 feet by 240, 240 by 240 square, actually. Yeah, 240 by 240, it's very big. So that's, you know, perspective, it's 80 yards by 80 yards. We're going to be able to break it down into several indoor soccer for young ages. In here, and also around, you see a walking track drawn in. That's, that's what the outskirts of it are. You know, big components of it, we got volleyball, basketball, soccer, those are probably the core components of this. In addition, we're going to be able to do youth development in baseball, softball, on the turf area, indoor football, wrestling, cheerleading, dance, you know, anything you name it. The local, or the latest national craze is pickleball, so we can't forget pickleball. In there, we brought pickleball indoors. It's all indoors. It's on the northwest side. We've got five pickleball courts that are going to spill in and look over into the green space. And then indoors, on the east side, on the northeast side, is a, oh, a multipurpose space that we can have breakout rooms or meeting space, whatever we need. So that's kind of downstairs components of it. If you, man, just scroll down one more, we'll go to the upstairs part. Like I already spoke about, in the middle are those team suites, team breakout areas we talked about. And then above it, we have a area that is going to be a family-friendly sports bar, maybe more sports than bar. But it's going to be an area to, that we have games. We have visual games, similar to a Dave and Buster's, but kind of all intermingled in there. Going to have plenty of seating. It's going to be able to, it's going to be real neat because it's going to have class that looks out over the basketball courts and as well as pickleball courts and out to the front. So that's kind of the components of the overall large building. Des, you want to talk about the entrance or?
Sure. The exterior building materials consist of CMU block. We're going to have a combination of vernish block and split face. Also, we're going to have metal panels on the exterior and then ACM panels in the storefront in current blocks. On the far side of here, you can see, that's the entrance of the pickleball side. We'll have glass all along, so we can have a feel the inside outside. We'll have glass all along, so we can have a feel the inside outside with people hanging out on the courtyard. They can also feel like they're part of the pickleball gaming area. This is the entrance to the multipurpose area. So essentially open glass, we want to have a feel inside outside, natural lighting to come in. The materials, same thing. We've got ACM panels in here and lock and storefront. And then on the back, you can see a little bit of the big building, which is about 40 feet high, and it's going to have a metal building on the exterior. And the next rendering is a view, little sneak peek of the inside of the courtyard, sorry, of the basketball court. And you can look into the team suite, they're all open into the courtyard, and it'll have TV, it'll have an area for the teams to hang out while they're waiting for their turn on the, to play. And then the next rendering underneath that is a view from the actual team suite. It's all pre-engineered metal building, like HJ said, 172,000 square feet of building.
Any questions, anything we have answers?
No, that's exciting. So wow, it's really, really nice.
It's impressive. This is exciting. I'm really excited about this. I think our community is really going to be excited about this, too.
Yeah, it's pretty neat. You know, we've, obviously, GM CN, Dick Construction, our team spent a lot of time. We're real excited about it. You know, Cecil and Ray's real excited for, you know, kind of a legacy piece to the community and excited to develop this area farther. It's going to be a real neat. It's big.
It is big.
Do you anticipate an opening date, or, I mean, I know it's a couple, is it a year down the line or a couple of years down the line?
Yeah, you know.
Six months, no.
Yeah. Our goal, our goal would be beginning in 2025.
Oh, okay.
Like I said, it's going to start moving vertical here in the next 14, 21 days. Steel's on site. We've got the last few crossties to pour, and they're going to be coming, inspecting that, I guess within seven days, and then we've got to wait for seven more and it's coming up.
That's great. Wonderful legacy project.
Actually, you've mentioned it's big, but just in context, some of the other facilities that you've visited that folks listening might be familiar with, like Wichita Sports Forum's the one that is probably nearest to Garden City, I would guess, and it's 140,000? And this is?
172. And the real neat aspect of this is it's all going to tie together, the hotel, the restaurant. When you're coming to visit Garden City, you're not going to have to leave the facility. And plus, we've got all the shopping right there near the street. It's, it's pretty neat. You know, we've got several ideas from different places. We've literally gone around the country looking at, trying to steal the best ideas and asking people whether they did right and what they did wrong, and people have been really receptive and helpful. Recently, we just went to South Dakota, to Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Sanford Sports. If you guys need Google, it is unbelievable.
It's amazing. It's impressive.
And it's a facility up there, they have several facilities. Got a lot of great ideas from them, but just been going around. We're hoping later this fall, they have some more cool pictures and some names and stuff to share, but we just want to give everybody an update to show you where we're at, just to say that everything's going fast and furious and looking forward to it.
Yeah, things like this is super exciting.
This helps us, too, with community members who come up and ask about the status, and so now we can kind of give them some, you know, over like the 30,000-foot level view of it, so thank you.
It doesn't, it takes a little while to draw.
Sure. Yeah, just a couple, it's a day or two, yeah.
Yeah, those architects are always like, hurry up, we can get it done tomorrow, right?
We have a lot more details to go with.
Right, yeah.
We've been working hard on it.
Yeah, you have. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
Thanks.
Included in your packet is item B, the Commission's Strategic Goals and Objectives Plan. If you've got questions on anything that was provided there, any of the updates you'd like clarification on, we'd be happy to field those. I don't, I think we'll go line item by line item, but this was intended to be a quarterly update. That's a liberal definition of the term quarterly. But I do think for the first report back out that several of these have, items have shown progress, and so we're pretty excited about prospects for completing, completing that list in 2023.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you for that update. That was a lot of stuff.
On item C and D, or monthly staff reports, if you have any questions over the financial report or the zoo report? All right, we'll call your attention to the meetings of note. It's starting to get close to fall, so there's several items that are of an RSVP nature. Please do those through the city clerk's office if there are items on there that you want to attend. I think we're ready for 9A. That's the appropriation ordinance. If you approve it, it would be ordinance number 2583-2023A.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2583-2023A.
A second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under ordinances and resolutions, we only have two resolutions. They're both abating nuisances. I'll read through the first one, and we'll present that in detail, and then the following one is the same thing, only a different address and different violation. A, governing bodies asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be Resolution 3026-2023, and this would abate a violation at 1109 North Third Street, Tritt.
Yes. Thank you, Matt. Mayor Commissioners, Trent Maxwell, Director of Neighborhood and Development Services. So at 1109 North Third Street is a pickup truck. I have a body seat assigned, taking part. Two notices were sent out June 2nd and June 13th. The property owners were notified. Do you want me to go into the second one, Matt?
No, they'll take this, they'll take this one.
Okay. Any questions that you have? The alternatives, number one, governing body may approve the attached resolution, which allows us to evade a vehicle. Number two, governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommendations to approve the, or alternative number four.
And again, it's gotten this far because you haven't heard any or gotten any response back from the homeowner, right? Or the property owner?
Just we're upset, but no, actually just to take.
Taken on it? Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 3026-2023.
A second.
It's been moved in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, if approved, would be Resolution 3027 and would abate a nuisance violation at 407 West Mary.
So this is, Ms. Ladies, items, indoor appliances and parts scattered throughout the property. Notice was sent on March 16th and June 6th. The property owner, after the first notice, did do some cleanup. It did not contribute to work, and the floors or children was remaining. Alternatives for this, governing body, number one, governing body may approve the attached resolution, allows us to step into the issue. Alternative number two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommendations, alternative number one.
I move that we approve Resolution number 3027-2023.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Trent.
This next item will take just a bit. I need to dial in the developers. Stephen, hi. This is Matt Allen with the City of Garden City, live in our city commission meeting. And if you'll hold just one moment, I'll conference and grant the view.
I'm currently unavailable, but it's.
Stephen.
Yes, sir.
All right, we don't have Grant. There was no answer. We'll continue if that's okay?
Of course, of course.
Mayor Commissioners, item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve, sorry. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the development agreement between the City of Garden City and Garden City Plaza LLC related to the redevelopment of property generally located at 2310 Kansas Avenue. Danielle?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Danielle Burke. The item before you is one that I've been before you a number of times, so I'm going to skip through a little bit of it. We've been talking about this development since September. You all have already created the TIP Development District, approved the redevelopment plan, adopted the CID district as well. So the final step related to this is really to adopt and approve the development agreement, which is the item before you this afternoon. You did a version of this a few months ago, but since that date in April, the Woodmont Development Company had reached out requesting some additional assistance in the form of a loan to help with cash flow kind of on the front end of this project. A loan provision has been added to the development agreement that is before you this afternoon in the amount of $200,000. The term of repayment for that includes a flat interest cost of $20,000 to help kind of with the administrative side of it. And those proceeds from, the first proceeds of both the TIP and the CID is what will be used to repay that loan, so the city would be paid in full on the front end with how the language has been drawn up. There is a time provision of five years included in there as well, in the event that those proceeds don't generate sufficient revenues to cover that cost. It's not anticipated that that will be needed, but that is in there in the event that those revenues aren't collected in five years, then the payment would be, would be due. So the development agreement has been prepared by the city's bond council, Mayor Carson. It has been reviewed and approved by the developers as well. So you have three alternatives before you here this afternoon. One would be to approve the development agreement as presented, related to the property at 2310 Kansas Avenue. You could also deny the development agreement or provide staff with alternative direction. Staff recommends that you do authorize the mayor to sign the development agreement between the City of Garden City and Garden City Plaza LLC related to this development. The fiscal note has been the same for all of these items as have come before you, with the caveat that we've added that additional language related to the loan provision. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you all may have. We also have the developer on the line if you have questions for them as well.
Any questions?
Don't have any questions, just comment.
Danielle, could you repeat that last time? I figured it out, I'm sorry.
Stephen, she's invited the commission to ask questions of either her or you at this point.
Ah, very good. Thank you.
And so I think there are.
I just had a comment that this is, that development is a talk of the town, so it's good to see it continue to move forward and to get to the point where we're doing the final steps and getting it going, so.
And I also appreciate that we have the ability, if approved, to be able to do these kind of things, because I, you know, sometimes this is what it takes to bring really great things to a city.
Yeah, the willingness to be creative.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions?
I make a motion, we authorize the mayor to sign the development agreement as presented to the commission.
A second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Stephen, the commission's approved the agreement. There were no questions of you.
I wanted to say to the commission, you guys, should say you guys, you folks have been incredible to deal with, and just say that Kohl's is, I've asked Kohl's if we can make a public announcement about their opening, as they're a little paranoid for whatever reason. So the answer I hope to have this week is yes. We have signed Burlington lease for them to take the remainder of the space next to Kohl's on the front. So we are appreciative of what the City of Garden City has done for us and this development to allow for this development to move forward and to bring what I'll call TA quality retailers into your community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Stephen.
Have a great day.
Thank you as well.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the acceptance of source capture systems for Central Fire Station and Labrador Fire Station. Chief?
Of course. My name's Cooper Wilson. I'm a firefighter, too, with the Garden City Fire Department. I'm just going to dive right into it. Upon completion of the McGrath organizational study, installing the exhaust and mission control system in the Almond Sheldon Central Fire Station, Labrador Fire Station, was found via priority one recommendation in the file report. In December of 2021, the Garden City Fire Department applied for assistance to firefighter grant, the AFG grant, through FEMA. In September of 2022, GCFD received notification of the approval of the grant in the amount of $83,272.72 in federal funding. As condition of the grant, the city is required to contribute non-federal funds equal to 10% or greater. A request, a proposal was issued by the GCFD for the design and installation of the source capture exhaust systems for Central Station and Labrador Station, May 17, 2023, and closed June 7, 2023. Two sites visited, two visits were conducted by installation companies, and subsequently resulting in two submitted proposal packets. Committee comprised of firefighters from the GCFD conducted a review of the two proposals, followed the review, and discussed the two, of the two proposals. A score sheet was completed and committed by all committee members. Score sheets were tallied and found that the proposal from Air Cleaning Technologies scored 76.75 points, while the MagnaGrip scored 66.25. After the committee reviewed, the evaluation criteria was identified, the qualifications and experience, quality, work team, air cleaning technologies as the committee's recommendation for the proposed project. So alternatives being, the governing body may approve the acceptance of the proposal from Air Cleaning Technologies. The governing body may approve the acceptance of the proposal from MagnaGrip, or the governing body may reject both proposals and provide further guidance to this. Staff recommendation was the, the air cleaning technologies in the amount of 9,1600, with 10% of that being matched with front funds from the capital improvement funds here just prior.
Good job.
So will you be using, since you've done this, you know, work up front as far as on these two systems, will this be the same system that's used in the new fire station also?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be, that would be, we'd use all the same components and the same company to come.
Come to the same. Great.
I appreciate keeping, or putting a score sheet in there so they can see, because I know the one that was recommended was, I mean, marginally higher, but if you look at how everybody rated it, it was across the board, the one that everybody thought was a better company.
Yeah, I move that we approve the acceptance of the proposal from Air Cleaning Technologies.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Please note that Commissioner Ortiz has recused himself.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the First Amendment to the planned commercial development plan for Kansas Food Bank located at 1204 North Taylor Avenue. Alicia.
Or Trent.
Spark, Trent.
We got to get this mirror.
Less hair.
Whoever.
Yeah, so what we're here for today is the planned commercial development that was previously approved. This is the First Amendment request that we're bringing before your consideration today. But this is on behalf of the Kent Food Bank Warehouse, Brian Walker. He's requested this amendment and essentially what the amendment is regarding, it's the address generally or locate that toll booth in North Taylor Avenue. And there are several sidewalks on the property. The north sidewalk is along Janey Avenue. That north sidewalk is being proposed to be installed at the time of the building expansion. And we want to make sure that this PCD reflected at request. The other two will be installed at the site on completion of the site work. The alternatives today is, well, one, there's a little, and two, there's a sunset for this. So in the event that the project does not develop as according to the plan, there is applied to your deadline to that north sidewalk along Janey. The alternatives are that the governing body may approve the PCD plan amendment as presented. And number two, the governing body may not approve the PCD plan amendment and direct staff to find an alternative. Staff's recommendation is that, that approve the PCD plan and next.
I move that we approve the PCD plan amendment as presented.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Wait for Commissioner Ortiz.
A lot of mumbling going on.
Need a bell.
The governing body, item D. The governing body is asked to consider and approve creating an ordinance annexing 143 acres of city property located at, on Old Post Office Road into the city boundaries. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Back on February 21st of 2023, the governing body authorized the purchase of the 143 acres of real property that was sold back with cultural and is located on Old Post Office Road in Hinn County. It's adjacent to the Garden City Industrial Park on East Mansfield Road and is contiguous to the current city boundaries. There are no structures on the property and we have hired TerraCon, TerraCon to complete a Phase One environmental assessment report. They did such and did not identify any recognized environmental conditions or controlled, recognized environmental conditions as such, no additional investigation was formed. If the governing body authorized staff to create an ordinance to annex this property, an ordinance will be brought back to the governing body for consideration at a later date. Just a note too, that when this property was purchased, it also had portions of vested water rights that went with it. And specifically, I've put the numbers in there, I won't go through all of that, but there are the water rights that come with that piece of property. So our alternative today would be the governing body may direct staff to create, create the necessary ordinance and annexing this property into the city boundaries and bring an ordinance to the governing body for consideration at a later date. Or the governing body may choose to not authorize staff to create this necessary ordinance and you could direct us to do something different. Staff recommends that the governing body direct staff to create the necessary ordinance annexing this property into the city boundaries and bring the ordinance back to the governing body at a later date for consideration. There is no financial impact to the city by you directing us to create an ordinance that's associated with it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions.
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to create the necessary ordinance annexing this property into the city boundaries and bringing the ordinance to the governing body for consideration at a later meeting.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12B. Item 12B. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the selection of Wilson &amp; Company to manage and perform the professional services required in the multi-jurisdictional Safe Streets for All Action Plan. Mike?
Yes, sir. In September of 2022, the city applied to the U.S. Department of Transportation's Safe Streets for, Safe Streets and Roads for All, referred to as the SS4A program discretionary grant, grant program. It was awarded grant funding of $1.3 million for the multi-jurisdictional Highway 83 Action Plan. On July 6th of 2023, the governing body approved a grant funding agreement with KOD, the Kansas Department of Transportation, for $340,000 for engineering expenses associated with the SS4A program. So in June of 2023, requests for qualifications from qualified firms were requested to manage and perform the professional services required for this multi-jurisdictional action plan. On June 26, 2023, one proposal was received from Wilson &amp; Company. This proposal was evaluated by five committee members following the criteria outlined in the U.S. Department of Transportation's grant requirements. Four factors were considered. A was the firm's qualifications and capabilities. B was past project experience. C was key staff assigned to the project. D was their technical approach. A total score of 1,150 points was possible to obtain in these four categories. Wilson &amp; Company scored 1,130 points. The committee members were Bradley, Pendergast, he's the city administrator in Scott City, Danielle Burke, Assistant City Manager in Garden City, James McGowan, Traffic Advisory Committee Member here in Garden City, Tyler Patterson, Public Works Operations Manager, and myself. To the governing body select Wilson &amp; Company to perform the professional services required for the multi-states jurisdictional SS4A Action Plan, contractual agreement that we brought to the governing body at a subsequent meeting. So the alternatives are that the governing body may approve the selection of Wilson &amp; Company to perform the professional services required. The governing body may choose not to select Wilson &amp; Company, or the governing body may direct staff to find an alternative firm for this professional service. Staff recommends alternative one, that the governing body approve the selection of Wilson &amp; Company to perform the professional services required and will bring back the contract at a later date. There is no financial impact to the city on selecting Wilson &amp; Company as a professional for this professional services that's required. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
I move that we approve the selection of Wilson &amp; Company to perform the professional services required in the multi-jurisdictional SS4A Action Plan. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks.
Item 12F. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the revocation of two cereal beverage licenses issued to Joe's Quick Mart located at 511 East Kansas Avenue and 2522 North Taylor Avenue, along with a reissue of previously approved CMB licenses to Corner Market at each location. Celine?
Mayor and Commissioners, as Matt stated, coming to you with two licenses, we were approached, the city parks office was approached in June from an attorney's office that handles the properties located at Garden City and Mary and Taylor, the licensing of those properties. And they asked us to issue a new license under Joe's Quick Mart. We proceeded with that. You all approved that on June 20th. We processed it, sent it out. On July 6th, we received a call from that attorney's office telling us that the deal didn't go through and asked if we could revoke those two licenses and revert back to the corner market as they were previously licensed in January of 2023. Spoke with the city attorney's office and they recommended that we present this to you guys to have you officially revoke those licenses and revert back to the corner markets, revoke that license.
So when we revoke it, then we do, will, when we revoke, then we make another motion to approve?
I think we need to do it all in one, is that correct?
So you revoke them and reissue in the same motion?
We were never actually, yeah, you're essentially just changing the name back to what it was.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all legal and everything, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the revocation of the two licenses issued to Joe's Quick Mart and revert to the previously licensed owners, Corner Market at both locations.
I'll second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Elin.
Item 12G is a request for an executive session, and we don't anticipate any action following that executive session. So if the commission would like to take up the consent agenda, then the commissioner reports and then we can finish up with the executive session. Okay. On the consent agenda, if you don't want to remove any of those items and talk about them separately, then the appropriate motion would be to approve H1 through 4.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda H1 through 4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do the commission reports. Commissioner Cessna?
Congratulations to Mike Muirhead on his national award. He's won a couple of state awards too, but this is a really big deal for not only Mike but for Garden City. Really shows that we have outstanding staff in the community, not only from the leadership, but all the way down to our, our, our staff across the whole spectrum of our, our organization. So congratulations. I mean, you expressed it during your, your speech, but I just wanted to express it too, that we have great staff and working hard to make our community move forward in a positive direction. Great to see the Starbond project can now highlight some of the things I've been asked a number of times, you know, what's going on? And this gives us a better idea to explain. I wrote down a lot of the huge numbers for this project, but another great way to attract people to and make Garden City a regional hub in Western Kansas. Great to see the, and recognize the explorers on their accomplishments. It's a great way to really grow and build our own here in the community. And then I just wanted to mention right quick that tomorrow, the Kansas League of Municipalities is having their strategic meeting, planning meeting on getting input for their strategic plan for the next three years, and that'll be from 11 until 1 o'clock at the Fennup Center. So just wanted to throw that out there. And that's all I've got.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yeah, just echo a little bit from Commissioner Cessna. Congratulations on the awards and Mike. Congratulations. Also, just like to say happy birthday to my son, Adric Ortiz. He's, he works at Buffalo Dunes. Today's the birthday. We sent lunch out there, so hopefully we didn't poison anybody with that. Yeah, Buffalo Dunes, while speaking of that, they've been working very, very hard and with all the tournaments that have been going on, the court still looks great. And I've heard that they want to just keep going with the improvements and get that done as quick as possible so that they can kind of focus on some other items that are on their list too. So just like to say welcome to Ideatech. Thanks, James, for coming up and talking. A lot of, I think there's a lot of community members who are excited to see other, other options here in town. So moving forward too with development, it's, it's great to hear that a lot of the comments that are brought up by developers and other community members who are investing in Garden City have, you know, great things to say about the city, how, how great it is to work with the city and, and things are moving forward smoothly. So, you know, just, I like to say thanks to all the departments here at the city to, to keep that going and it's nice to hear so that we can also, you know, carry that on into the public and whoever has questions with the, with the size of projects and what's coming next, we can kind of share that with them. So with that, I think that's all. Thanks.
Mr. Dick?
I'd like to first say, I'm excited to see the, like I said in the comments, the Woodmont project moving forward. Seeing Kohl's and Burlington will be exciting to hear about the potential openings of those stores. I know that that's a big talk of everybody in town and around the area. Also, great to see, thanks for, for Garden City Investments and HJ and everybody kind of giving us an update on the Sports of the World project. Really excited about that. You go to Schollman Crossing, I mean, growing up in Garden City, so you know what our city's like, you go out to Schollman Crossing and it's still like one of those things where you stand, you stand there and you're like, wow, this is Garden City. Like, I mean, I still get that, it's almost like a vertigo every once in a while. The, the Starbond project's gonna be like that too. When you get, when that's actually built, like, wow, this is actually Garden City. So really excited and reinvigorating to seeing them come and have some renderings and show everybody what their plans are. Great to see that. To comment off of Bob Wetmore with Great Plains Development, he did mention the SBDC Center, so in conjunction, the Fannie County Economic Development in conjunction with SBDC. We do have a local office again now that's housed out of the economic development office. We hired Grant Linnenberger, and he's been on staff for a couple of months now. But if you do know anybody who's looking to do development, small business, like, like Bob said, with those business plans and that kind of stuff, we have a guy that's specifically there to help the community through a partnership with SBDC and Great Plains. So just a hit on that. I did go to the county commission meeting yesterday and they did say during their comments that the Hunden study is just a couple of weeks out. It was supposed to be done in mid-July, but they, I've been talking to them and it should be here within a couple of weeks. So by our next commission meeting or soon after, that Hunden study should be done. So looking forward to seeing that. Couple of other quick things. I was able to go to the Silver Screen on Saturday, I don't know if that's what it's actually called, on Saturday down in this, in the park. That's the first time I've gone in a while, it's just usually timing wise doesn't work out for me. That's a really good event. I mean, it helped because the weather was really nice, but I counted, there was about 120 people at this, free popcorn. I mean, if you're looking for something to do with kids on a Saturday evening where you just want to unwind, bring a lawn chair or just sit there, that's, it's a really good deal. So thanks to the rec for putting that on and everybody else who makes that possible. I'm sure not, a lot of people are excited about working at 10 o'clock at night on a Saturday, but it does, it's, it's well appreciated and well attended by the community. So thank you for everybody who did that. Congratulations to the explorers and, and all the work that they did. And then finally, thanks and congratulations to Mike. And like he says, it takes the whole team, but I think he's underplaying his own role in this. And Mike is one of those people, the more you know about him, the more you learn about him, the better you like him, the more, I mean, it's, it's one of those people, the more you learn, they're just such a great person overall. And, and awards like this is good, but just everything that he brings to our community and to our organization is just, just without equal. So congratulations, Mike, on this and well, well deserved and we'll see what award you win next year. That's all I got.
Commissioner Andrew.
It is harder going. So yeah. Well, I just wanted, you know, I wanted to talk about Buffalo Dunes. I was at an event this weekend and had so many people talk about our golf course and how many times they've played it. And so, you know, our golf course is not only state famous, but I'll tell, it's probably world famous, so I just really appreciate all the work that they do out there. It was great to hear an update on the Sports of the World complex, four and a half acres under one roof was, that is, that's, that's pretty amazing. The thing I really appreciate that they spoke to about, and then one thing that we as a city are trying to do is attract young families and, you know, bring people back. And so young families, now older families also need things to do, but I think the thing that's neat is having this family-friendly everything. And so just something for everyone, that was really exciting. I do want to say thank you to the Explorers Program. I know my son personally took, took advantage of that. And I'll tell you, this molds and change, changes young lives. It provides them the direction and also opportunities that they never thought they would have. And so it is an excellent program. I know it's a lot of work and young people are a lot of work, but you know, the Explorers and the Police Department and the way it is being handled is just excellent. So I want to say thank you to the whole Police Department and just for the support of all the young people. And the Fannie County Fair is still going on. It is hot. The fair is really, it's really neat though this year, so I mean, if you have a chance to go out and look and do some things, it's really a lot of fun. I do want to, I am saving the best for last, and you know, Mike has been such an incredible inspiration to our whole community, but also I thought was really neat, it was really neat meeting some of your family. We knew he had family, you know, while we were recording, he had family, so. But no, it was great having, have his, his daughter come. You know, and I just, this is the one thing I, one thing I want to mention, there's so many other great things you could, but you know, you are just an incredible example of a humble servant leader. And I said, you've done that time and time again. And you know, again, this idea of not wanting to accept the award for yourself, but really the idea of accepting it for not only us as a community, but really us as a state. So I just want to say thank you.
Yes, congratulations to Mike. I think, you know, it's a testament to your leadership and your personality, just with all the people who came. I mean, it was a free lunch, but still. It was a testament to the fact though that people, I think, appreciated your leadership and that they recognized the honor and it was great to meet you, Mike's daughter, and you know, just to have that opportunity to just honor you for that time. So thank you for your commitment. time. So thank you for your commitment to the city and all that you do for us and will continue to do, because I think like forever, right? And so, anyway, congratulations. The public comment, it was great. I mean, that's one of the things that I think with commission meetings, I mean, that public comment time is so important because that's really when something's not on the agenda that you want to speak about. And it can be about anything, city-related. We just enjoy having people from the community come up here and talk to us and let us know their concerns, their questions, their praises, if they're new in town, just to make sure that we're aware of that. I mean, these meetings are televised and people do watch them. And so it's important for people in the community to, you know, have that opportunity. And it's open to anybody. That's why we have that time set aside. Matt and I had a chance to attend the funeral for Sergeant Gregory Knoll. It was very nice. But I also wanted to make sure that the police department, the fire department, the electric department, the sheriff's department were recognized for all that they did to make that homecoming for this sergeant who, you know, died a heroic death, but he was missing for, you know, since 1944. And to be able to bring him home and to have his family see all of that and just how Matt, with everything that you coordinated and every, all of the plans, and, I mean, it was quite an honor to be able to witness that. So thank you for all of you who made that happen. Backpack giveaway is going to be next Thursday, the 27th, at Garfield, starting at 9:00 a.m. It is, if you qualify for free and reduced meals, you'll qualify for a free backpack. So, and there are school supplies. We have over 1,500 available and ready to go. So we're really looking forward to that. I also had a chance to attend the Little Leaders of Garden City's open house. I mean, it was nice to see the changes and to see how that looks. And so thanks for everybody who really put that together and made all of those changes. And I really hope that it continues. So next up, we're going to do executive session.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, for, oh, did you have one thing?
I was just going to ask those one question.
Sure.
For those backpacks, do you need to have documentation for free and reduced? Because I know in the past, when it was free lunch for everybody, you didn't.
Usually just if you bring like a stamp card or if you get, if you get any benefits, just bring the benefits card or a pay stub. Yes, yes, thank you for asking.
Yeah, so item 12G, we request a governing body, request the governing body consider an executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. This pertains to consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship.
For how long?
10 minutes.
Okay.
For the specific purpose of discussing contracts.
Okay.
And with the city attorney, city manager, public works and utilities director, and assistant city manager Burke.
I make the motion we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 pertaining to consultation with attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship with Matt Allen, city manager, Mike Mirrorhead, utilities director, and Daniel Burke, assistant city manager, on the discussion of contract starting at?
12:15.
12:15 for 10 minutes.
Or 2:15.
Or 2:15, sorry, and getting out at 2:25.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will go, we'll take a short break and then we'll go into executive session at 2:15.